I'd like to call this order of the Norfolk School Committee for Tuesday, January 8th, at 7:05 PM. As we do with all of our meetings, read our mission statement. The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners, publicans, and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. We'll call.
Jeff Chalmers.
Mark Flaherty.
Kelly Peterson.
Thomas Doyle.
Sean Gilroy.
Ingrid Allardy.
Great, thank you very much. As we begin with all of our, with our big crowd this evening, we would like to remind everyone that we are being taped for broadcast, and so keep that in mind when you're chatting away. If you are going to be speaking, please introduce yourself and use one of the handheld microphones, or are there any handheld microphones out there? So just use the microphone up here. So now we open it for public comment. No, no, no public comment. So moving on. Let's see, alright. Donations, let's see, donations we have received, $280 from donations for holiday projects from various families, and then also another $50 from Looters Environmental, donation from, when the letter was attached. Looters continues to support us. And so is there a motion to accept this 330 dollars?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Just a couple little announcements. The TPA is having their bingo night. It's the big, one of the big fundraisers for the year. It's this Friday night at 6:00 PM at the H. L. of Day Cafeteria. So if you haven't bought your bingo ticket yet, please contact the Norfolk TPA and come to that. It's a, it's a really fun time, and there's capped out at 350. So if you haven't gotten your ticket, make sure you get them soon. Also, I wanted to share with the rest of the committee, and with the public, right at Christmas time, the H. L. of Day School, a lot of the children made up pictures for, for us, thanking us for all of our hard work. So we have things, you know, that say, "Thank you, School Committee."
Look, there's you.
I was gonna say, who was that?
Picture me. So I just wanted to pass these around to let everyone see those. They did them for all the town hall employees as well. And they, and they accompanied it with a poem which I wanted to read. It's called "The Respect Poem." And when you show respect to others in all you say and do, the respect that you have offered will be given back to you. How do you show, show respect, you ask? Here's something I have learned. Try to always give to people the respect that they have earned. Speak with courtesy and kindness, and honor rules with pride. Listen, learn, treat others well. Self-respect will be your guide. So it was kind of a nice thing. We've actually printed that and put it around town halls, so it's kind of, hopefully we'll keep residents and employees alike remembering. So, alright, any other general announcements? Moving on to mine, let's see, the maintenance plan. Did you have anything for?
We didn't have a document you were gonna talk about contracting out to have.
Right.
Yep.
So what we were going to be doing, and I was also actually, I spoke to Jack Hathaway earlier this morning as well about working with the town to having a facilities manager, maybe splitting a facilities manager with the town, and they would be, you know, very much, you know, interested in that. They currently have a part-time facilities manager, so Ron Bane, who's also our electrical inspector, does the special facilities for the town, and he said he would be happy to talk to him, see if he would want to be taking on more of a role. But above and beyond that is what we're going to be doing, needing to do more in the, in the near future, is also contracting out with, you know, additional facilities to do a, what we've already done, that we've.
We talked about, yeah, bringing a consultant in to help us take a look at facilities and the buildings, and to develop a five-to-ten-year long-term maintenance plan, so that we would be better able to budget and anticipate costs of things that need to be updated, painting that needs to be done, equipment repair, things like that. And I did talk to Todd Hassett, and we do have, we can fund that out of the operating budget, so that was something that we just wanted to share, that we were looking at. Todd has a gentleman that has done that for, for us before, and has put, helped us put together a long-term maintenance plan, however it was for the old building. So we think it makes sense, because we've got a brand-new facility, to do that same thing up front, so that we can really help plan maintenance work that gets done over the summers, during the vacations, and have a sort of a, sort of a schedule for maintenance, so that we don't, so things don't slip, and that we keep things in top shape.
Some of the other things, you know, with this new school, with, you know, the level of technology, and the HVAC systems, and everything like that, it's so complex, it's not, you know, old-school, just, you know, tweak it here and there. We really need to have a plan in place, and we need to have, you know, we also have to have specialists on call, and consultants to come in and just make sure everything is working optimally. You know, we spent, you know, millions and millions of dollars, you know, developing these systems. We want to make sure that they're running at its, at their peak performance, and also we don't have issues, you know, with lack of maintenance that cause, you know, instead of spending, you know, a couple thousand dollars now, it costs 20,000, 30,000, and 50,000 dollars later on. You know, I know we've had instances like that, just, you know, just recently over at the H. L. of Day, you know, with the sliding curtains, you know, the fact that they have not been maintained for years and years, and now they're broken, and it's, you know, instead of being, you know, a few hundred dollars maintenance fee, it's, you know, tens of thousands of dollars to fix. So that's, I think one of, needs to be a, a focus in our budget, and since we have the budget in the, in the budget to shift and make sure that we at least start getting the plans in place, and then start interviewing consultants, and hopefully be able to pull on a, you know, part-time facilities manager to oversee it. Toby does a phenomenal job with all the maintenance staff, but, you know, some of these, you know, some of these systems, you know, I was, you know, I did a walkthrough with the PV system earlier this morning, and, you know, the complexity of, you know, all the different, you know, the 50,000 kilowatts, you know, of arrays up on the roof, you know, and how it all flows down, and how all the electronics, electrical systems, you know, run through into the generator and its backflow, you know, it, it was mind-boggling. So, I mean, you know, having someone that actually specializes in these sort of, you know, complex, more modern buildings, I think is imperative for us. So any, any discussion on?
You guys had left, or I think you had left the last building committee, and I don't think you were under the weather, but there's some training that's available that we still need to take advantage of for the, for this building.
Yep.
That I think there's no limit to the amount of people that goes, from what I, was explained to me, if I understood it correctly. So along the same lines, we definitely need to make sure we take care of that, so as many people as possible.
Absolutely. They did just schedule a, a training session, and Lisa has Toby, and Rocco, and Raphael, and a whole team going to it.
Okay.
Because I think you're right, cross-training in case there's an emergency situation, making sure multiple people know how to operate the systems.
I mean, it's step one of it, of maintaining these things, right?
Absolutely. Yep.
Yeah, because Thomas, as Thomas knows, I mean, you know, the, the systems are just, you know, crazy complex, you know, with all the different controls and everything like that. It's not just turn on the heat, turn off the heat, unfortunately.
And to have the consultant come in too, and really develop a five-to-ten-year plan will help us anticipate budget costs, what things are gonna have to be replaced, at what time, what the, you know, estimated cost will be. So that's, that's something that we'll be working on in the next few weeks, getting that up and running.
And you, you've identified a consultant?
Yeah, we, there, the district hired somebody who did that work about five, six years, how long, do you know how long ago it was, Roxanne? I'm not sure. A few years ago, who did a really phenomenal job, worked well with everybody, worked well with staff, and Todd recommended, he was gonna get a price from him to come back, but has expertise in that area.
Right.
Could be easier with a new school, so presumably.
Yeah, although there's different costs, yeah, but, yeah.
I don't know, HOD could be obviously a little different.
Is this consultant affiliated with any services that could be provided after, down the road?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
My, 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 here's my, my results, and look at, look at all the stuff I can now sell you.
Having been a consultant before, I know.
That's how you do it.
I'll tell you, you need all this work, plus you need more consulting.
Right, there you go. Mark? Anything? Jeff? The other item I have, which is gonna probably be our big item, is obviously security. You know, in the wake of Sandy Hook, that's one, one of the areas that we're gonna be taking, taking a definite hard look at. We're gonna be, you know, obviously working with the, you know, the federal government, and also the state is, you know, the state police is coming out with a whole school plans, and, you know, I wanted to, I wanted to bring in John LaFond, who's the Vice President of Integrated Systems for Linear, you know, it's a Fortune 1000 company, all they do is systems for schools, you know, his company came in and took over Virginia Tech after their shooting, and they do all the facilities, security for New York Police and New York Fire. You know, they're a worldwide company. John actually lives in Norfolk, he has children at HOD and at Freeman, and so he said he would be willing to come in completely free of charge and do a full evaluation, you know, and give us, you know, whatever recommendations, you know, he, he comes up with, he'll, you know, he'll walk through and work with the police and the fire, and, and he's like, you know, free of charge, it's, you know, if, if you like it, my recommendation's great, if you don't, throw them in the trash, you know. And he's, he's like, he goes, "I'm not trying to sell anything," he goes, "I'll be, you know, matter of fact, any recommendations I make, unless it's something that I can, you know, try to get donated from my company," he's like, he goes, "And I'm willing to try that as well."
That's amazing.
He goes, "Anything else, I'll always recommend, you know, another, you know, another vendor out there." He goes, "I don't want it to be construed that I was trying to consult in order to sell anything," he goes, "So I'll be able to do that, and, you know, once you go down that path, I pretty much know every industry player in the world, so I can help negotiate pricing and get things down lower." And he's like, he goes, "This is, you know, you know, my family, my town, my kids," he goes, "I'm, you know, more than willing to, you know, above and beyond for this," you know, he travels a lot, and so that'll be, you know, the one, you know, his, his only tough challenge, 'cause he's all over, all over the world, you know, doing this exact same consulting. So it's kind of nice that a little district like ours can get someone with that sort of expertise.
Absolutely.
I want to just make sure, you know, kind of, I wanted to propose that we, you know, allow him to come in and do that.
This would be something, obviously, the police would be here with him at the same time, so just a giant walkthrough, we're all, okay, sounds good.
Exactly.
I love the idea.
How quickly?
Aye.
He, he called me last week, he's like, he goes, he goes, "Any word?" And I'm like, "As soon as we have the school committee meeting, and then we'll just coordinate with Ingrid," you know, 'cause, you know, the state police is coming in and doing some things as well, and, and then with Chuck Stone and, you know, Chief Bushnell, just coordinate it, and he's like, he goes, "I'll be more than happy to do it, you know, I'll take off on Friday, or if, you know, if it's better to do it on the weekend when kids aren't here, and do it that way," you know, whatever, you know, Dr. Allardy and the Chiefs think is best, he's like, "I'll be happy to do it."
That's an amazing offer, I second.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Just wanted to make sure it wasn't, it wasn't an exciting fire that I didn't believe. Just a medical call, so I'll stay. The, so, so there was a second, any further discussion?
When he comes to do the walkthrough, do you want any of us at school committee present? All of us, some of us? 'Cause I would love to be there myself.
Yeah. I think it would be, I think it would be worth while there, if you're interested, you know, you know, provided that it's, you know, not, you know, we'll talk to Dr. Allardy, you know, if it's gonna be during the day, it might be, you know, you wanna make it as least disruptive to the students as possible. You know, so I think it probably depends on when he's, when he's doing it, I mean, I would think it'd be great, you know, if we can't be there at the walkthrough, you know, he said he'd be more than happy to, he's like, if he wasn't out of town this week, he would've come to our school committee meeting and answered any questions. He's like, he goes, "I'll be happy to come in and do a full presentation for the school committee on everything that I come up with, and, and do a separate walkthrough with them if that, you know."
Yeah, I think it would make sense, it would be easier to have something explained if we're all there, actually having seen it.
Right.
So I think at the very least, whoever us can, are able to go, should go.
Right, yeah. I mean, I would love to go, I mean, that type of insight's amazing.
Yeah.
To have a guy like that.
You know, I'd, I'd love to be there, you know, I've got a little bit of experience with, like, basic security stuff, and so I got some experience, you know, and with my military training and stuff, you know, that I could probably, you know, maybe understand a little bit, at least what he's saying, you know?
And I think we can check with the, I would assume police and fire want to be involved in that walkthrough, so I think to talk to Chuck Stone and Chief Bushnell about the best way to do it, whether they want to do the security audit and walkthrough first, and then share findings and go back through it with the school committee, or whatever makes sense. You know, again, it does depend on whether they want to do it when kids are here, and all that.
I would also think that it would probably be easier, so we don't disrupt the learning environment, to maybe do it on a weekend when people are available. You know, I know weekends are tougher for some people, but at least in my opinion, it would be better than having all of these people walking through the school, and going into classrooms, looking at stuff while the kids are trying to learn. It'd be less disruptive.
Right. So, I mean, you know.
We'll have to play, figure that out.
I think we have to see how police try to do it.
I assume you would be going in every classroom.
Yeah, we'll let, we'll let the Chiefs figure it out.
Figure something out. I guess the only thing, I guess the suggestion would be if, I'd rather sooner rather than later. So I don't want to get this too pushed down the road, if we're coordinating with the state police, and look, I mean, I imagine, you know, sooner we can get it, if we have to do it a second time, great, but at least let's get this going.
Right, yeah, let's get this, get this moving right away.
Absolutely.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, that's, to have this type of offering, that's amazing.
I know, I, I was, I was thrilled, he's, and he's also made the same offer to KP.
Wow.
So, I know he was meeting with Dr. Wilinski.
Beautiful.
So I don't know if he's met with your, it's been brought before your committee.
No, nothing, we had a meeting last night, nothing was mentioned.
Okay.
So, but that's amazing.
Both this school and H. L. of Day?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there by chance been any information from the state regarding funds or services available for, you know, not only our school district, but other districts?
Not a lot out yet, but do you want, can I, should I jump ahead and do my school safety update too? Okay, 'cause we're on the topic.
Let's just finish the vote.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so, seconded, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the only other thing I'd like to discuss is just from the standpoint of when we do, after, you know, he presents and things like that, and when he does, you know, do his presentation, and we're making implementations, we probably will do those all in executive sessions, 'cause obviously we do not want to have all of our security secrets and what we're doing, and for safety, out there on the internet, and, and, you know, for worldwide, I mean, these will need to be, you know, confidential information from the standpoint of if we're doing X, Y, and Z, we don't want everyone to know, oh, well, if we go through, you know, go around this way, then this is, you know, how it is. So, I mean, just keep that in mind when we're discussing a lot of these things, you know, and it'll be, you know, unfortunate that, you know, some of the times that parents will be like, "Well, tell me exactly what you're doing," and you're just like.
Well, I understand that, but don't you think there's also some level of information we should provide the community through an open?
Oh, yeah, no, there definitely should be, you know, we're, we're doing, you know, you know, big picture stuff, you know, whereas the exact, you know.
Details.
Details of your security plan.
The code for the, you know, you know, and exactly, you know, the security protocols and procedures, if something does happen, so, you know.
It's all OPSEC stuff.
If they're all entering in on, you know, row X, the, you know.
No, I understand.
You know, that, those sort of more strategic, you know, thoughts.
OPSEC, COMSEC stuff.
Alright, so if you want to jump ahead.
Sure, I just want.
Well, I'm done anyway, so, I mean, that was, that was it for, for me, so we can just go right into the student interview.
Alright, I can, I have a bunch of things to do, but I think I'll, I'll start with the school security. Obviously, in the wake of what happened in Newtown, we have had quite a few calls from parents, and with concerns, just wondering about what we're doing and what procedures we have in place. I did want to make sure that the public is aware that we do have comprehensive emergency plans in place at both elementary schools. We have procedures and protocols that are practiced regularly for fire drills, for evacuation, as well as for situations like a lockdown. HOD did already practice their lockdown drill earlier in the fall, and they, when we do practice the lockdown situations, we always do that in conjunction with the police, who observes the procedures and will debrief with us afterwards, give us feedback on what we could do differently and improve, and then we make adjustments and debrief with staff immediately. Freeman Kennedy will be practicing a lockdown drill tomorrow. We rescheduled the one that was originally scheduled, because we didn't want to do it right after Newtown, because it would be frightening for kids. We did send, Lisa Altham-Hickey sent a connect ad out to the Freeman Kennedy parents today, just to advise them that we'd be practicing the lockdown again, because this is the first time they practiced in the new building. We wanted to make it as non-threatening and, you know, comfortable for kids. So teachers will be talking to students tomorrow about the different kinds of situations where a lockdown may be called that are not violent situations. We could have a severe weather situation that you would lock down the building, we could have a situation where there's, if there was a staff medical need, then we don't want kids passing through the hallways, you might do a lockdown, or even something if we called a contractor in, they checked in in the office and forgot to put a visitor's badge on, we may lock down until we can make sure that that person's identified. So we're gonna try to do, we will practice all the procedures. The procedures really in a lockdown, the practice drills are really for the adults, because the kids are gonna take directions from the adults in the situation. So it's for us to practice our procedures. We'll do it in the way that is as non-threatening to students as possible. We will have the police involved tomorrow, so they will be here again to give us feedback, and we'll be adjusting procedures and protocols as well. In addition, parents probably have noticed that we have had an increased police presence on both campuses since Newtown. The police are in and out throughout the day, just to have a very visible presence on site, and they have been great about agreeing to continue to keep that up at, at both campuses. I think there are task force work, task forces working at both the state and federal level to see what lessons we can learn from, you know, the tragic events that took place, and they will be making recommendations to schools for improved security too, which we will certainly look to and consider. And I think bringing in the outside consultant to do an outside security audit will be also helpful. So we are looking at all those procedures. We, we do have a lot already in place, we have very good protocol that has been practiced, and we will be looking at those, you know, for any opportunities or ways that we can improve the security, and, you know, it's a very serious issue, it's the, our number-one priority. So I just want to assure people we're working on that. And as Sean said, I think to share with the public, when we, we do the security audit, if there's information or things that we're gonna be changing that we can make public, we certainly will do that, but I have shared with parents too, that we cannot share the entire content of our emergency plans, because it does make you more vulnerable, you know, and the people that need to implement those need the detail level there. And it's for protecting security that, that not all information is able to be made public. The other thing I just wanted to inform the committee about was, I just wanted to commend, we have a school psychologist here at the Freeman Kennedy, Dr. Jenny Milano, who actually went last week, she volunteered on her own to go and provide counseling for, she primarily worked with first responders from the Newtown incident, and provided some counseling for parents and families. The kids went back to school last week, so mental health providers from across the, you know, New England area went to provide support. So she did spend Wednesday, Thursday, Friday there, and, and helped with the counseling for first responders and, and parents, and helped the students transition back. So it was a very difficult job, very emotional, but I just wanted to commend her and thank her for her, her service there. Any questions for me on school security? Alright, I do have some other things for you. Because we are part of the BIKO County Collaborative, I am required as a member of the Board of Directors to bring you their annual report and share some information, and also to provide you with a copy of their financial audit. So the first thing you have in your, your packet is the BIKO County Collaborative Annual Report. Basically, what's included in this report is a definition of kinds of programs that BIKO provides. Really, they provide alternative programs for children between three and 22, who have significant special needs, whether it's social, emotional, behavioral, or learning difficulties. And they also provide developmental education and therapeutic services to kids with intensive special educational needs. They have a variety of different programs. If you look through the guide, it defines, you can, in the back of the guide is a list of all the different programs they've run, and where they're housed at different schools. There's also information about their staff demographics. BIKO employs 165 staff members. The majority of their staff, you'll notice, were hired within the last five to 10 years. There is some turnover there, the 80 of their staff members are in their first five years of employment with BIKO. 53 have been there six to 10 years, and then a smaller number have been long-term employees. So there is some turnover of staff, but they've improved, and they've put some things in place to support the retention of, of employees. You can see a breakdown of the age and grade levels of students served. You know, the majority of their population is high school, although they do serve a smaller portion of elementary and middle school students. You can see a breakdown of students served by disability type, and you can also see the cost savings for districts that are members of BIKO for different kinds of placements. There is a significant cost savings, we do have students that are enrolled in BIKO programs, and there's the significant savings for those students to get their needs met in that kind of program versus outplacing in a special education or private program. So you can take a look at the cost savings analysis there. They also provide you information on graduation rates, the percentage of students that are transitioned back to their home schools, and they've had some really nice success with that. And then the last thing, on the last page is a copy of the financial audit from BIKO, and basically that, that is required by law, that they bring in outside auditor in annually, and you'll see the statement there that just assures that they, that they were in compliance with all the regulations, and that there were no issues of misstatements or concerns with their, their budget process.
Do you have a copy of the BIKO?
We have a handful, about three. Yeah. Alright, and then you also have a copy of the BIKO contract agreement, and that's just for your information. Any questions on BIKO?
Compared to the other, like, K-36 in the district, do we use that service more than other districts, or?
It's pretty comparable. BIKO also, I should say, does provide some consultation services, and they also provide a service for a 45-day diagnostic placement, if you have a child that is experiencing significant difficulties. We do, we do have some children that have been placed for a diagnostic period too, so we use their services beyond just the programs. Alright, other things in your packet, and you'll see a copy of the school gift account expenditures, that is to be provided to school committee quarterly, so that is just for your information. I'd be happy to answer any questions. You know, primarily, there's some reimbursements in there for teacher expenses, the ribbon-cutting ceremony was funded through that, the Welcome Back Breakfast was funded through that, there was a luncheon for Dr. Jackson's leaving that was funded through that, so that's, and the bulk of it was spent on Camp Bourndale scholarships for students.
What are the stipends for extra courses?
If teachers are running an after-school course that they're being paid for, or tutoring, things like that. Alright, the next thing you have in your packet is a proposed calendar for 2013, 2014. I did meet with the administrative team yesterday, Wednesday, and, last week, and we took a look at the calendar and made some recommendations. Basically, the proposed calendar has the same number, the exact same number of professional development days as we did in this calendar. Rantham and Plainville have asked if we would all consider starting school on the same day, and, you know, it, it worked for us, it would be the Tuesday after Labor Day, and after Labor Day start. So we built the calendar with a proposed start date of Tuesday, September 3rd. One change in October, this year you had a professional development day the Friday prior to Columbus Day weekend. The administrator's recommendation was to move that to the Tuesday. Friday, at the end of the long week, is not a great day for, for professional development, but it does work well for families to have two days back, for childcare reasons, to have it be an extended weekend. So the recommendation for next year would be to put the two professional, to put the October professional development day on Tuesday following Columbus Day. So it would still give families a long weekend, but it's a better day, and it also, instructionally for kids, doesn't give us two short weeks in a row. You have a full week the week prior, and you have one short week.
And why is professional, not to nitpick, but why is it better on a Fri-
It's not great on a Friday.
After a long holiday than on a Friday?
We've, we've put them against a long weekend, because it's easier childcare for, for families, but the feeling is that it's more productive to do it on the, in the beginning of the week But the feeling is that it's more productive to do it on the, in the beginning of the week versus the end of the week when you're doing a full day for, for staff training. So the Tuesday, it was, and also, again, if you do it on the Friday, then you have two short weeks in a row for students and, and that's a little bit difficult curriculum-wise. So it's only breaking up the one week.
As a kid, I really loved two short weeks in a row of school.
As an educator, it's tough.
And I think just like anyone else, it's, you know, if, it's the Friday afternoon of a long weekend.
Right. It's a hard time to-
After lunch, I'm going to be like, yeah, can we wrap this up and-
No offense, but after a long weekend, I'm like that all day long.
I don't know. I think the beginning of the week is easier. It's easier for people and we only have-
Your boss is sitting there right now on his computer going, really?
And I think also, we have, most of our professional development days are just half-days. So if we have one full day, we want to put it at the best, you know, the best place for that. No changes to the November calendar. We have the same recommendations for parent conference days. We are recommending moving one of the half-days up into December instead of leaving it out in January, just because if you're doing training in October and you don't follow up on it for three more months, you know, we wanted to shorten that window, but we couldn't get it into November because there's just too many other half-days. So we'd recommend putting one of the half-day, the other half professional development day, December 11th. Leaves January fairly uninterrupted, February vacation as it is, no changes to March, no changes to April. And then again, we'd suggest the same thing with the, there's, we'd recommend, on your calendar, you see the 23rd as a half-day. We'd like to recommend moving that to the 27th, so the same as we did in October. So that the professional development day is actually on a Tuesday instead of on the Friday. So that we'd have to update and change on your calendars.
Which one was this?
Memorial Day, sort of in May.
Yes, we would recommend in May. The way it's, there's an error in the calendar. It's listed as the 23rd. We had wanted to shift that to the 27th, so we'll have to redraft that for you.
It would be a half-day on the 27th?
Yep. Because we only have, we can't make it a full professional development day because we need 180 days for kids.
Right. That's going to suck, so I don't care.
Yeah, it was a half-day on the Friday before. But again, the half-day for your professional development, when you only have a couple to try to do training the second half of the day before a long weekend is not a great instructional time.
But you're doing that in April?
We're doing it once in April because it doesn't make sense to, to do much with that because of the April vacation week. So we would leave one Friday half-day and then the others would like to move to Tuesdays.
I mean, and are they, having these two days, would it be better to have one full day, maybe the 27th, instead of the 11th and the 23rd?
Can't, because if we serve lunch, it counts as a day for the kids' calendar. If we take it as a full day, we have to bring the kids in another day. It's going to add a day to the teacher's contract budgetarily.
But a half-day, you don't serve lunch?
The kids have to come through noon to, for it to count as one of the 180 days. So if we, if we, if we were to make it a full day and the kids don't come at all, we have to replace that day at the end of the calendar.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm saying. The, the May day, the May half-day is generally used for class placement too. That's a big thing that gets done on that day. So again, we'd, we'd rather have, do that work on the Tuesday versus a Friday before vacation.
Is there any way to play around with this to not have school end on a Monday for a half-day in June? Because you're talking about people being unmotivated.
The only way to do that would be to change the start date.
Or we're going to have snow days.
You will have snow days. I mean, the 16th is with no snow days.
We didn't have any last year. We haven't had any so far this year. I'm saying, theoretically.
We did close already this year because the power outage. Yeah, yeah.
How many snow days are built in?
The only way would be to change the start days because the 16th would be the 180 days.
That's one of those damned if you do, Dave. I mean, if you do it on, you know, the following Friday, you have one snow day, then it bumps it to the Monday anyways.
How many snow days?
There's just, like, two kids are going to show up.
How many snow days are built in?
I would be willing to gamble you won't end on the 16th because, you know, if you have any snow days at all, you'd be pushed back.
I mean, it's usually going to be probably the 23rd. I guess the only one I have a problem with is the, the half-development day in, in May from a, from a parent-family standpoint. I mean, you know, I think a lot of people want, you know, like to take off early on the, before Memorial Day, you know, and having that Friday be a half-day, you know, and I realize it's not, you know, as advantageous for the teachers, but it's not so much, you know, like you said, it's not so much professional development as it is class placement anyways. So I guess that would be the only one I personally would like to see remain on the 23rd. I don't, I don't like coming back after that Monday and have the kids go to school for three hours and then having to deal with, you know, I think people can plan on a Friday afternoon and having kids, but Tuesday afternoon is more difficult. On the May one, is what I'm saying.
On the May, the Memorial Day, so you're-
Right. So I, I like the way it is on the calendar as opposed to moving it to Tuesday, the 27th. So leave it as 23rd as opposed to 27th.
Yeah, I, well, I would, okay. I mean, I, I just, right now, it's a mistake on the calendar.
Yeah, it's listed as the 23rd and the administrative team had, had really wanted to try to move it to the 27th as a better working day.
But I think that'll be difficult for families as well.
I mean, half-days in general are difficult for families. Do you think it's more so-
Well, I think it's, I think it's easier for families that are planning going away on a long weekend, Memorial Weekend. You know, a lot of people get out at work early on a Friday to go down to the Cape or go wherever, you know, or take a trip or whatever, as opposed to having a full day on Friday, then having to go somewhere and then come back on Monday and then go to school for three hours in the morning and then still have to find daycare. I mean, that's, you know, kind of my thought process. And especially since this isn't going to be an educational professional development and this is more class placement, I would say that's, that would be the one I would, you know, I would, I like having-
It's hard to get the, too deep into class placement. Like, we can't start really, if the kids leave at noon, then we have to give everybody lunch. By the time they sit down to start placement, it's 1 o'clock and that's a tough-
But that would be the same thing on that Tuesday. I mean-
Yeah, but you, you don't have people that are also trying to get out at 3:15 to get, but, but we can look at, the other thing we could do is look at moving that half-day to another day and not, not backing up to the long weekend.
So I, I may need a little clarification here. On a, on a half-day, instead of having two half-days, instead of just having it all on one day?
We'd love to do that.
And what's, what's-
We have to have 180 days that students come and that's, you know-
So a half-day counts as a full day?
Yeah, it counts as a day if they're here halfway.
Even though it's only a half-day, it counts as a full day.
So we're sacrificing student learning to-
I don't think we're sacrificing student learning. I think, you know, there's a lot of districts that do half-days every, you know, every other week, every other Wednesday.
In Westwood, yeah, in Westwood, it's every other, every other Wednesday.
Professional development. It just counts, it doesn't, it counts as a school day if kids come to school and stay for half the day. And there's really important work that needs to get done. So that's where our struggle is, is the important work that, you know, we want to be sensitive to families' needs and try to, to center that around a holiday, but at the same time, we don't want to shortchange the work that needs to be done and, and put the PD time at a time that's not ideal. You know, I can go back to the team and talk about that, that day. We can also look at moving that extra half-day to a different, to a different time.
With the MCAS, that's MCAS, right? That's what those other blocks are? Yeah, so I mean, we're having the MCAS, it's really-
What about moving that half-day to the 13th right before one of the MCAS days?
We don't want to have kids out prior, I don't think, to the test.
Get them rested before the, huh.
Yeah, they need the review and I think the routine.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, the stressful life of the third grader.
We could certainly look at moving it to, like, the Friday, the 2nd as a half-day or we could look at, you know, we could look at some other alternatives.
And November 11th, is that always a day off of school?
Veterans' Day.
Yeah. Right, I know it's Veterans' Day.
Yeah, it is. It's a state holiday.
State holiday.
Yeah, federal holiday.
Why do I always have to work?
Sounds like the federal government, I have to work too.
Actually, when I worked for the federal government, I still had to work.
So I didn't want to bring this to vote today. I just wanted to share a proposal and, and have some discussion. And I can come back with a, you know, I can come back with a proposal on the May and give you options and, you know, we could leave it where it is or we could look at some other options and-
Do it in June?
We possibly could do it in June. You know, again, I'd like to look at the, I'd like to talk to the administrative team in terms of timelines for placement and things like that, but we could look at a day in June as well. That's when MCAS is over.
Is that, and that's not too late for a placement, right?
Nope. I mean, there's a lot of end-of-year events.
Have to be on Friday. I mean, for instance, the one in the summer.
No, we could do it on Tuesday. I mean, we could do it another day, Wednesday.
There's nothing- I was going to say, we could all, we already have a half-day built in on the early release last day. So is teachers be motivated that day right now?
Is everybody comfortable with the rest of the calendar outside of that May date?
Yeah.
Well, is there, I, I know we've started in August before.
Yeah, Rantham and Plainville asked if we would all have the same start date. You know, it helps us a little bit in terms of professional development and things like that, but it's also easier, you know, for families too, I think. KP is going to start on the same day too. They're, they're looking at the 3rd. So it's hard for some families when, if we don't start the same, if we start before KP and you've got kids at KP that are going the 3rd, but you also have kids here that have to be back the week prior, it's a little hard for families. So that's why they had asked if we could all have the same start date. Rantham had a different date before and so kids at the elementary level had a different start date than their adolescent peers that were at KP. So that, that was the thought between.
And the high schools following this?
Yeah, yeah, that's what, we were trying to all align and, and be consistent with the high school.
What about, is, when is Good Friday this year?
You're going next, next calendar year?
2014.
Yeah.
The 18th?
It's 18th?
It must be the 18th of April.
Okay, because I know that's what we did two years ago. We made that a half, that was a full day and we made it a half-day. And then we could take in the professional development and made that a, into a full day. That's the only thing I was trying to think of. Is it?
It's the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. It's always a half-day.
2014, not 13.
Okay, that's not professional development.
Nope.
April 20th?
Is Easter. So Good Friday's the 18th anyway, so it doesn't, they're already in the week.
I thought you were saying the 20th was Good Friday. I'm like, that's not a Friday.
They're really screwing with the calendar this year. All right, do you want to keep moving on on that?
Yeah, so do you want me to come back with some ideas of what to, what the possibilities could be for that May date and, and give you options next time? And then we can-
I don't like the, the 27th. I mean, I think June could be an option, I mean-
All right, so let me bring that back to the administrative team and I'll come with recommendations for what to do with that last half-day and then we can draft the calendar from there. All right? Great. And the only other thing I wanted to mention tonight is that I am still working on putting together the Parent Advisory Council. I've put out several newsletters. The goal was to start the group in, in January and we will be starting. We have about 10 people who have volunteered to be part of it. And my goal with that was really to facilitate a forum for open communication and for us to be able to collect information from parents on how we're doing as a school, issues and concerns that they may have. So it'll be a very casual, open dialogue and I just wanted to put it out there in case there's other parents or other community members that want to participate. If they do, they can just call our office. We're hoping to schedule the first meeting for sometime close to the end of January and it will be an evening meeting because that's the, the preference of the people that have signed up so far.
Do you have 10 people so far?
Close to 10. Yep, that's great. We're looking to try to get a diverse, you know, some people from HOD, some people from Freeman Kennedy, different age ranges to really enrich the perspective and, and I'm looking forward to getting started. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee reports. All right, NEST, Elementary School Trust did its winter fundraiser and raised over $2,000 with the Nest Egg Program. We, we had children from every single classroom, families contributed money, so it was a great success and we got a, hopefully got a lot of information out there. We're looking into doing a program in the spring. We're looking at doing something community-wide, you know, for, for school-aged children, maybe bring in, there's a local magician who, who does a program all over New England. It's a kind of a cat in the hat reading program, but he's, he's a magician, so he builds magic into it and make that open to the community. And we're also looking at a few other ideas. In addition to that, the grants for the teachers will be available in about two months for them to start applying for, for a, hopefully we'll be able to give them out in May this year. So we've raised 2,000, a little over 2,000 on that and 1,200 on the, on the bake sale. So we've raised $3,200 this year, which is great considering that, you know, that's more than we've raised the previous three years combined. So making, definitely making progress, still looking for some more volunteers for the NEST Board. You know, only meets once a month, it's not a lot of heavy lifting, but we're, many HEAS make light work, so. Anyone that knows of anyone, please give me a call. Budget Subcommittee, Kelly?
I'm always unprepared for this because we, we're meeting after the meeting to, to go over this, but I will-
You can discuss your agenda that you have planned. Talk about money and the lack of money.
Okay, I will say that we, we have started the process for, for rationalizing the budget for next year. Dr. Alardi has put together a couple of anticipated costs that will go above and beyond the, the budget that we had for last year. For salary step and lane changes, for our teachers, it's going to be approximately $296,000. And for some district-wide prioritized budget needs, it's totaling, not agreed upon yet, but about $150,000. So combined, there's about 300, 450,000 in additional funds that could potentially be required to keep local services. So, how was that? Good?
Awesome. That was one of the best, best reports of the year.
Stay tuned.
KP?
We had a visit last night from State Senator Richard Ross as well as Dan Winslow to discuss exactly what's going to be upcoming in the legislature and right now, we've got nothing because they're not essentially meeting for a couple of weeks. So, but it was the same thing. We could probably have them come in front of us on a quarterly basis, maybe discuss some of the things that are coming forward in the, in the education. So that'd be nice. We had, we're still going through some unfinished business regarding collective bargaining for teachers. We're going to be doing paraprofessionals and we're also going to be talking secretaries as well. So that'll be upcoming in the next couple of months and hopefully we can get things straightened out within the next three, four months.
Their, their contract ends this May, right? I mean, ends this June? So are they already, so they're in the midst of?
We've been in the process for several plus months just to get a sit-down.
Oh, that hasn't started yet?
It's been, it's been a process back and forth between that and union.
Wow. Kudos to the Norfolk, to our union with a very, very, you know, very different.
Yeah, yeah, certainly, Sean, two different, two different worlds.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's, that's unfortunate. Anything else?
And aside from that, we're in the process of negotiations with the superintendent.
So is her contract up this year too? Wow. Big doings this year. Okay, policy.
Okay, we got a second reading on the student costs, fees, fines, tuition and charges.
So file JQ, okay?
Yeah, file JQ. There were a few things that the committee wanted changed or, some wording. So we went through and we did that.
Is the purple the latest revision?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that reads better. I think that looks good now.
Still not a fan of the late fee.
I think at the last meeting, we discussed taking out the $10 late fee and it wouldn't be an automatic charge, but leaving the committee the option of charging a late fee.
I know it's May, maybe it's-
Yeah, so it may be assessed and it could be-
So now they owe $7,010?
No, 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 no. It doesn't, it doesn't define it. We could, we could-
After 30 days.
Right.
We could charge them 10%. We could charge them, you know-
It just leaves you the option of setting an appropriate amount.
We could charge them $7,000 for the late fee. I mean, I don't, I don't care. I mean, but I think that gives us the discretion.
I guess, where is this being spelled out beyond that? I mean, if someone has, using his example, $7,000 balance, where is that then going to be spelled out with a person? Can't just arbitrate, like, oh, by the way, we decided to charge you $15,000.
We wouldn't charge an individual. It would be, what we're leaving is, I mean, we wouldn't make an individual decision, this family's being charged. What we would do is if there was a situation that we were running a tuition-based program What we would do is, if there was a situation that we were running a tuition-based program, and we were having significant trouble recouping costs, things like that, then it leaves the option of us coming to the committee and saying, "We would like to assess a late fee to," for, I'm just throwing an example, for band fees, because it's cumbersome for us to collect, we're having trouble-
The program is on a whole?
As a whole. And then you would make a decision as a committee, and you would set the fee. So that's all we wanted to do, was leave the flexibility, should that, because really, the late fee assessment is not so much to penalize families monetarily, it's when it becomes incredibly cumbersome to try to recoup fees.
No, that part makes sense.
So we wanted to leave that option.
That's okay, I thought we were talking about-
No, we wouldn't say, okay, this person's late, we're gonna charge them.
The oil, alright.
It just leaves the opportunity.
You drive a Bentley, you're gonna be charged more.
If there's a tuition-based thing, that, that we need to bring forward to the committee to vote on whether you want to assess the fee for this program as a result of a situation that's arisen.
Okay.
And then, on item KDCC, we're waiting on some clarification from Gloria. We gotta reword a few things, so we're gonna-
Yeah, this was the policy that was gonna come forward for a second reading tonight. I'd like to request that we delay the second reading, because I did send this for a legal opinion. We had discussed the, the free speech issue, and how far-reaching our policy can go in terms of limiting solicitation on school grounds, so we had discussed getting a legal opinion. And he feels that we can actually be much stronger, and that the law will protect, and that we can prohibit any distribution of leaflets, any materials on school grounds, and be within the realm of the law. So he's gonna draft some, some new language to that. So I'd like to delay the second reading on this one until the next meeting, if that's okay with everybody.
Okay. Good. And we have two school partners that have reapplied, applied for renewal. CPAC, where are we, what were we discussing last week about redoing? Does this have to go through policy? A, okay, so, Mark, can you put on a policy, a renewal, a renewal form? Okay, good. Just from the standpoint of CPAC, Special Education PAC, you know, applying for a renewal, but it's, you know, just left blank, because there's not the questions there for, you know, and granted, CPAC's not, it's not an, an issue with them, but I don't want-
Right.
You know, other organizations to kind of not have anything to discuss. Like, I was discussing yesterday with the REC department, and they're filling out theirs now, and they're like, well, it doesn't really ask the right questions, what do you want? And so I explained to them what we were actually looking for, you know, what have you done with the Norfolk schools, and what's your partner, you know, how are, how are you acting as a partner? So, all right, so if it's already on your agenda, then-
Probably just be an incidental change, we'll just change the form and bring it back, but we'll work on that.
It doesn't need to be a full reading or anything like that. Is there a motion to accept CPAC as a Norfolk School Partner renewal for 2013? You belong to it, Jeff, you should at least, you should at least make that motion.
Yes, I wanted, I didn't want to be biased, but yes, yes.
Mark was a so moved guy.
Okay, are you gonna second it, Mark?
I'll second it, sure. Where are we doing? Where am I?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then the other one is the NTA, Norfolk Teachers Association?
No one.
File 13?
Things about these people.
That's, for those watching at home, the rowdy part of the crowd.
Smile, you're on camera.
Is there a motion to accept NTA as a school partner?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ooh, lots of seconds, wow.
Take my second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I want officially to recognize I seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
I wasn't the only one to vote, Lee.
Do you know what I could whack? Okay, and approval of minutes? Anyone have any questions or addendums to the minutes?
They forgot to put in the pay raises that we're getting.
Yeah, exactly.
You got 10% more than last year.
Tripling our salary.
Yeah, exactly. That's next week's agenda.
Yeah, next month's agenda is really-
Next month, yeah.
About 10 minutes.
Is, is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next week's day. We have sent for, is it February 5th? No, February 12th.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, it's the week before vacation, right?
Right, because vacation's the 16th to 20th.
Yep.
What day are we, February 12th?[1730.12]